Hello, everyone. We're about to start our virtual town hall. We'll give a few minutes for all the participants to come in. So bear with us as we allow the audience to sign in. More people are jumping in as we're waiting. So we'll give an extra minute or so before we start, just to have everyone able to jump on. Okay. Just again, as you're joining us right now, we're just waiting a few more seconds just to have everyone jump in. It looks like we're almost there. All right. It looks like we'll go ahead and start now. So today on our virtual town hall meeting, I'm happy to announce that we have Steve Bradford, Senator Steve Bradford, our state senator from Sacramento, joining us today on the call. He will be touching on a few topics, especially his legislation that he's trying to bring in that's going to help not only renters but as well as landlords deal with the COVID pandemic regarding their mortgage and rent. Stephen Bradford brings a lifetime of experience to the California State Senate and over two decades of public service, first as a Gardena City Council member, then as a state assembly member, and now as a state senator. Bradford has proven himself to be an unwavering citizen activist. He views himself as a public servant and not a politician. Public service was instilled in him by his parents, who taught him the value of giving back to the community. Thank you, Senator Bradford, for joining us today.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I want to thank the councilman, Councilman Awad, for this invitation to participate in what we hope to be an honest and direct dialogue as to where we are as not only the 35th Senate District, but the state and the nation as a whole, as it relates to not only COVID-19, but what we've seen through the peaceful protests for now, 15 days since the horrible murder of George Floyd by law enforcement in this country.
Thank you for bringing up that as well. We here as well in Hawthorne have been allowing the protesters to, you know, practice a first amendment speech, coming out and addressing these systematic injustices that's been plaguing us for many years. So I'm happy you brought that up. And my first question is, how are things in the legislature now? And are you able to meet yet, or when will you be able to work yet as a complete body?
We've been working as a complete body since May 11th. We've been back, the Senate Assembly came back on May 4th. The Senate conducted our first legislative session, floor session today. We just concluded it about 30 minutes ago, and we dealt with a number of bills. I think we had seven bills and our new Transportation Secretary confirmed as well. I had three bills that moved off the floor unanimously today. So we've been working, and I let folks know even the two months from March 16th to the time we went back on May 11th, I probably never worked harder because it was constant meetings such as this, Zoom calls, things of that nature, where when we were at least here in Sacramento in our district office, we didn't spend three hours on the phone having meetings like this. So it's good to be back. I mean, Sacramento is different now, quite naturally, with very little public access to people. We aren't only allowed to have one staff per member in the building, so we're working at a very shorthanded, so, but we're getting things done nonetheless, though. So thank you.
I'm very happy to hear that. Now, can you tell us about your legislative initiative to provide help to renters and landlords? I mean, it's quite a feat to accomplish, and I know there's a battle ahead of you. But if you could touch on that, it's a wonderful piece of legislative that's going to help, you know, not only the South Bay, but the entire state as a whole.
Yes, it's initiative. I was tasked, along with Senator Hertzberg from San Fernando Valley, to chair the Senate's Economic Recovery Task Force. We're the co-chairs of that, and there are two proponents of that, a $25 billion bond, not bond, I should say, but fund that we're putting together for small businesses and various business opportunities and investments throughout the state of California. And I'm tasked with what's called Renter Landlord Stabilization Act. What this piece will do will provide a forbearance or relief for rent for up to six months for tenants who qualify, those that are in economic hardship. But we clearly understand with a tenant not paying, it also puts that landlord in financial jeopardy as well, as far as making their mortgage payments. Many times when we think of landlords, we think of major corporate entities, and when in actuality, many of these landlords are small mom and pop individuals who've just invested their, you know, frontline workers, essential workers, our bus drivers, our male people, our teachers, who, you know, were smart enough or able to invest in maybe a duplex, a triplex, and, you know, and now might even have a unit where its owner occupied and other two units are rented out. So we understand the stress that they have in making their mortgage payments. So we've devised a program that, again, provides the renter six months of relief, but at the same time provides the landlord six months of tax credits, tax credits that are equal to the amount of rent that is being lost. And the renter has from 2023 to 2033 to pay back that rent, but they don't pay back the rent to the landlord, they pay back to the state of California. The state of California leverages money through a tax credit or through financial institutions that we're working with, along with the Treasurer's Department, to securitize that, and that landlord is given that credit. That landlord then has the option, if he needs immediate cash, he or she needs immediate cash, they can sell that tax credit. But if not, they have 10 years to hold on to that tax credit. They can apply it annually to their tax obligation to the state and monetize it that way, or again, they can sell it on the open market or to a financial institution that wants to securitize and take advantage of that. So we're trying to look after both ends of the spectrum. It's still a work in progress. As we say, we still haven't landed the plane as it relates to all the details on this, but we're getting a lot of traction, a lot of interesting conversation in regards to that. And I think if we can put it all together, it's going to be very helpful for, again, both landlords and tenants. And we're also mindful of the fact that there are some folks who, even with this forbearance, still won't be able to pay back the loan and there will, I mean, rent. So there will be some type of rent forgiveness for these folks as well. But we're working that out because we, as we know, even before COVID-19 had, it was many renters who struggled to make their payments on a monthly basis. There's roughly about 2.3 million Californians who are renters, who, again, many of them are essential workers, are frontline workers. So we know the struggles that they were in prior to this, and COVID-19 has only added to that. So that's kind of a 30,000-foot overview of this rent stabilization plan.
Now, how's the, how do you feel it's being taken by the rest of the body? Is it looking favorable to the legislature?
Oh, very much so. It's, we're getting tremendous support here. I mean, yes, there's some pushback from folks who think we should be doing more for renters, as well as there's pushback that says we should be doing more for the landowner. And so we've tried to strike a good balance here because it makes no sense for an eviction. The landlord loses rent if he has to go through, he or she has to go through an eviction process. So, and what we're also trying to say that if a renter can pay any portion thereof of that rent, we're encouraging them to do that. So if your rent is $1,000 a month, just because you qualify for the forbearance shouldn't relieve you from making some portion of that rent. So if you can put $500 down a month on the rent, we're asking those tenants to do that. We're just not saying, hey, you don't have to pay anything at all unless you're absolutely financially strapped. So the renter still has some obligation, and that difference or that delta is what that landlord will receive in the tax credit. So like I said, we're trying to thread the needle where both sides are protected during this process because the last thing you want also is foreclosure on rental properties because that doesn't help the tenant as well because that puts them on the street as well. So we're trying to balance this quite carefully right now.
It's a very fine line that you have to deal with. Now, with the whole side of, you know, with regards to the state economy and, you know, it officially becoming and being sent out that, you know, we're now seeing a recession. In your mind, how do you think we can regenerate the state economy and how this piece of legislation is also there to help the residents?
Well, this piece of legislation in and of itself is not going to rejuvenate or generate our economy, but the second part of the $25 billion fund that we're securitizing through the Treasurer's Department, we're working with our Treasurer Fiona Ma, and using those funds and having a two-year window before having those funds being paid back to allow us to invest in infrastructure projects, shovel-ready projects, be it our highways, be it some of our grid hardening through wildfire, through building additional low-income housing as well. So we're trying to incentivize, protect mom and pop businesses who are struggling so their loans made to them because as we've seen through the federal program, the CARES Act, little if any of that money made it to the mom and pop businesses, especially minority-owned businesses. As we saw through the first and second round, the majority of that money went to major corporations like Shake Shack and Roof Christ and even the Los Angeles Lakers, who all decided to return that money because at the end of the day, they probably really didn't need it as much as some of these smaller businesses needed it as well. I also have a proposal which is called the Jump Start Act. It's stood for jobs upward mobility program, and this proposal is a tool that will get capital into small businesses located in economically depressed areas, and hopefully will keep those businesses afloat. And it would do so by, again, the Treasurer's Office authorizing a fund above the $375 million of private capital. And this money would be federally licensed lenders on behalf of institutional investors. And the business, small businesses, it would be able to access this cash, and we're really targeting this in the form of loans with low interest rates and caps to minority equity state businesses. So the capital also has to be deployed within at least 70% in the first year and 90% in year two. And to be eligible, small businesses must be located in a census tract with high poverty rates of 20% or more, or high unemployment areas, as determined, again, by the State Employment Training Panel, or be in a rural area because many times people just think about urban areas that are being impacted, but our rural areas are being impacted as well. And again, 300 million of this would be a tax credit to be invested in, and these tax credits would be paid back starting in 2022 over four fiscal years at a cost of about $75 million a year. So that's how we pay for it. That's how we don't have a direct impact on our budget, which is clearly taking a hit due to COVID-19. So we're coming up with these strategic ways, creative ways to put money back into the community.
Wow. That's quite a lot you guys are doing up in the state, just to make sure that, you know, we're somewhat safe, you know, dealing with the whole pandemic. It was something that came out of nowhere. So the fact that you guys are able to come up with swift ideas to safeguard our budget, that's amazing. Kudos on that. You know, we do have, we have a question from a resident on the proposed legislation. They said, they're asking, when you say six months of rent covered for landlords and tax credits, does that go back to March or April, meaning it's not an additional six months? It will cover past months of unpaid rent too, right?
It's just a six window. Wherever that clock starts, you get six months forbearance where it's not going to be retroactive. It's going to hard, it's going to be hard to make it retroactive. We're seeing if, say, the legislation were to pass today, you would have six months from today to take advantage of your rent forgiveness.
Ah, okay.
Because it's a federal program that's already been in place to guard against evictions and landlord protection, but this is a separate program where we are incentivizing, like I say, providing these tax credits. The federal government's not providing tax credits to these landlords because, again, a lot of folks at the beginning were saying, let's protect the tenant as well as we should be. But again, landlords have mortgages, and a lot of times people think, again, these are multi-billion dollar corporations or million dollar corporations, and they're regular working people, our teachers, our law enforcement people who just happen to have invested in real estate, and this is their retirement, this is their college fund for their kids or their grandkids, and we want to make sure they protect that. So that's why we're providing that tax credit. Again, we've heard from a lot of landlords, it doesn't make me 100% whole because you only can access 80% of that if you probably were to sell it on the open market, but it puts money back into their pocket and allows them to survive and at least continue to make their mortgage payments.
It makes quite a bit of sense. Thank you for answering that question from our resident. The next question we have here is, from a state perspective, what should we be focused on regarding COVID-19, especially now that we're slowly reopening cities for public use?
Well, I can't say what we should be focusing on, but what we should have learned is how ill-prepared this nation was for a pandemic such as this, and that we should be better prepared. We're woefully equipped when it came to PPE. We're woefully equipped when we talk about not only food deserts in many of our communities, but healthcare deserts, where many people, especially people of color and people, poor people, didn't have access to healthcare professionals, still don't have access to testing right now. And I think if anything has shown, we've learned from COVID is, again, how racial disparities have played a major role in what we know or should have known here in society, where, again, people of color are dying at a higher rate, being infected at a higher rate, are having fewer access to, like I say, testing and medical facilities and PPE. But what we've learned also, these are frontline and central people, people that we had kind of discarded, are the folks now, we're keeping economy going. They're our warehouse workers, they're our hotel workers, they're our bus drivers, you know, they're the folks who are coming in every day cleaning our buildings. I mean, even our state employees here, our SEIU men and women who have to come in every day and clean this capital, you know, very thoroughly, you know, they have to come in. So we realize our frontline workers are essential workers who have been disregarded. They're valuable to society, and we need to have a greater appreciation for the work they do and the salary that they make. So, you know, when we had, when we passed raising the minimum wage to $15 two years ago, it was a lot of screaming and shouting, but we still realize that's still barely above poverty wages, you know. So I just say COVID has exposed a lot that we need to address as a state, as well as the nation.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And the fact that you mentioned that, you know, just the minimum wage being up to $15 an hour, you can tell now, just even with the housing crisis, just to even get an affordable rent on market or even to purchase a home now, it's very difficult for individuals making that low of revenue stream just to make it buy. And especially now with stay-at-home orders and the whole COVID pandemic and people losing their jobs, it puts more strain on us electors to try and find a way just to have these people and our residents just to stay afloat and above water.
Yeah. Is this the councilman answering the questions? Asking the questions?
Yes.
I didn't know that. Hey, what's going on? I'm sorry. I didn't even say hi. How you doing, man? See, I can't see anybody, so I apologize. I just, I know that voice.
Yeah. Yeah, that's me. Been a while.
You bet.
Pretty good. I'm just trying to do the good work that you're doing up there.
Well, I appreciate it. I tell folks often, you know, they, they look at state and federal elected officials and kind of like put us on the pedestal, but the real rubber, where the rubber meets the road and where the work really gets done is on a local level. And I, I will say that till the cows come home, this is where the work's done. So thank you for putting this together.
No, and I appreciate you actually taking the time out of your busy schedule. I know it's not easy. And to meet us from, to call in from Sacramento, I greatly appreciate that, especially this piece of legislative initiative. I can't begin to tell you how many residents in Hawthorne, both on the renters and landlord side, were jumping up for joy, the fact that someone from the state was pushing for the voices on both ends. So I thank you for that. It makes my job a little easier, having state legislators give me pieces of work that I can use to help the residents here. So.
And I will add, a piece of legislation that I just got off the Senate floor today is a bill that will also allow renters who choose to have their rent payments reported, they can build credit that way as well. So we've also learned the number of people who, you know, are unbanked, don't have credit for a variety of reasons, and many folks who have been renters and pay their rent on time, you know, responsibly, but they get no benefit long-term other than housing. But so now we're, they're going to be able to, if the landlord chooses to participate, report that to a credit bureau so they can build a credit history as well. So they hopefully one day can become homeowners as well.
Oh, wow. That's a very good program.
Yeah.
There's a, we have a question that came in now from a resident. Let's see here. Are you able at the state level to constrain rents to the raise in social security increases to prevent seniors from being evicted?
Are we able to constrain rents? No, we're asking for landlords, again, to be sensitive to the fact that this is not the time to raise rents. And I think, again, the eviction protection that has been put in place by both the federal and state level is some of those safeguards or rails that we've been able to put in, and we've had discussions with, you know, various apartment owner associations and asking them to be sensitive. Again, one of the things we want, don't want to trample on, as people often say, is rent control. We're not going there. I mean, there are rent-controlled cities such as Santa Monica that exist, but again, we're in discussion with folks to just be sensitive at this time. And we have tried to initiate through some legislation. I don't have the bill in front of me, but I think there is a piece of legislation that will freeze rents until the first of the year.
And that's, that's a very good point you brought up because there was one resident now that asked, is there going to be a freeze of rent increases until 2021? And you just touched on that, that there is a bill being moved forward, hopefully, to do that, correct?
Yeah. There's a piece of legislation on that. I think it's several pieces of legislation, putting a hold of freeze on rent increases for a period of time.
Oh, excellent. They said, thank you very much, by the way. So I just wanted to give you that.
Bravo.
Heads up. Let's see here. Now we have, there's one last question on our side before we go to the Q and A from the residents. What can we do here in Hawthorne, especially myself, to get the economy back on track? Any ideas or pieces of legislation I should be cognizant of that can really help the residents here in Hawthorne?
I mean, many times.
It's kind of a hard kind of question to kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I wish we had a magic wand and just say, just do X, Y, and Z, but it's, I think each business is unique. And again, if, as local elected officials that you're working with some of those small businesses or even your larger corporations where maybe even the cities, you know, suspend, you know, their business license tax or something like that for a period of time, allow businesses to catch up. If you put a hold on that for three months or six months, or allow them to do partial payments, I mean, and stagger their payments, you know, throughout the year back to the city, whatever, or even waive some of the fees, you know, for maybe doing new construction projects for them, you know, those are some of the easy hits, but at the same time, it's a more direct hit, again, to your general fund, to your, your bottom line, and we have to be, you know, conscious of that because cities survive based on their business taxes and their license and fees like that. So, but it's a balance.
Okay.
And just.
Yeah.
And it's also doing what you're doing right now, having dialogue and understanding where some of those common grounds are, where people are willing to compromise and work out some kind of understanding and agreement. I think through dialogue, you can solve far more problems than, you know, us retreating to our respective corners and, you know, burying our head in the ground and saying, it's my way and highway, and I'm not going to give, this is, I've always done it. Because I think, again, it's going to require a reset of our priorities as local government, state, and the nation after this pandemic is over, to reevaluate how we do, deal with a lot of things, not just from a business perspective, but a whole lot of things.
Yeah. You're absolutely right on that. And the fact that the idea of pausing the business licensing for three to six months, that's actually a very good idea, and that would help a lot of the mom and pop folks here, especially the restaurant industry, to kind of get back on their feet. So that will be one thing I'll actually bring to council. And when we get that pushed through, I'll make sure it's a thanks to you and this forum that we can get spare ideas. This is why it's all about.
It's all of our ideals, trying to work together to solve that. I mean, we're all in this together, and that's why I try to get folks to understand, not until we understand that we all have skin in this game, where we really address the problems that we face. Like I say, it's going to take a collective effort to dig ourselves out of this.
Get this one. There's a, actually, we have a Christina Shippy, I'm sorry if I butchered the last name, Shepe, Hawthorne School District Board Member. She wanted to thank you for taking your time, Senator, to come out here and address some of the common questions and concerns of the residents here, especially in their district. One of the questions that she poses is, what help or support is there for our local schools?
Well, hopefully, the budget we vote on on Monday, they're working on the final details tomorrow, will be the final budget hearing before we have it, it be in print after tomorrow, and so we'll see it. But it's a lot of work. I'm not on any of the budget committees, I'm not on none of the subs, but protecting our schools. but, uh, protecting our schools, uh, uh, having a safe environment for when schools reopen, and how do we, you know, uh, have social distancing and all that? That's been a, a top of the discussion. We've been working closely with our, uh, Superintendent of Public Instruction, uh, Tony Thurman, who's a former colleague here in the legislature, so, uh, we've had several meetings on that. So, and protecting the, again, the funding to schooling, this is, even though we're in a, definitely gonna be in a budget deficit this year, we're, we're trying to not have any negative or unnecessary additional negative impacts on school funding. So, uh, that is definitely one of the priorities that we're looking at, but I'm, I'm unfortunate, I don't have all the details, 'cause again, I won't see the final budget until, uh, Sunday after it's been in print for seventy-two hours.
Well, I'm, hopefully with that, with that being pushed through, and like you mentioned, that getting some funding to our local school districts, um, you know, would help kind of ease them into allowing more students access to distance learning. Um, we've, we've seen that, especially with the whole tech side, um, a lot of residents in a lot of different pockets of, uh, Hawthorne, they don't have access to, say, a laptop or, or internet, just to even hop on to, you know, their, their school curriculum.
That's, that's one of the biggest problems that we've realized. A lot of times people think, 'cause you're in an urban area, that you're wired for the internet, and, uh, we have many, um, isolated pockets where, in urban areas that are, are not wired, and more importantly, you have many families who do not have computers in your homes, so you surely can't do homework and, and, and do, uh, papers and essays on a smartphone. So we're also working with some of the tech companies and getting them to donate some of this equipment to a, a lot of school districts, so, uh, there has been some commitment by companies such as HP to provide school districts with, uh, this equipment for a period of time where the students are able to take it home and use it as long as they're needed, until schools are back up and running to their, uh, full capacity again. So, uh, those discussions and, uh, are going on right now, and, and, and those commitments are being made.
Oh, so if, if, if any school or, or school district wanted to contact HP, uh, is there a, a phone number that they can find, maybe on their website, to contact?
I, I, I wouldn't say HP alone, we're talking to a lot of our tech companies, but there, I know they're one of the ones, early on, that said they're trying to assist school districts, and I think they have provided, uh, tablets, and, uh, I don't have, again, the specific school districts that they've provided that information to, but, uh, uh, that activity is happening, and those discussions are going on, even, uh, a lot of our cable, uh, providers are also providing hotspots. So, again, those who are not wired, they can access through wifi, and the libraries or in, uh, in their neighborhoods, they're creating these mobile hotspots for, uh, families and kids to be able to participate in distant, distance learning.
That's, that's sort of wonderful to hear. Uh, what's also nice is that the, uh, Chris- Christina from the school board, uh, school district, Hawthorne School District, mentioned that, uh, they've had a program now where they're giving computers and hotspots for their own students that need it. So, thank you Christina for, 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 you know, creating that program, um, uh, for our students here in Hawthorne, um, especially those that do not have access. Um, I'm glad to see that Hawthorne School District's, you know, taking that, uh, and championing that for our city. Um, we have another question here. Uh, this might be, if, if you are, um, able to answer this, but they say, "Mr. Bradford, do you know which cities in your district currently have rent control in place?"
Have what now?
Uh, rent control in place.
I don't think any city in the Thirty-Fifth Senate District has rent control. I know City of Gardena, where I live, has a rent mediation board, but far from rent control, but they try to resolve any disputes between landlords and tenants, but, um, no, I don't, I don't think, uh, any of my cities have rent control in place. I know there's like, senior housing, and some are senior citizens where that's a, a state or federal rate, but no, not rent control, no. That is controlled by the city, or set by the city, I should say.
Uh, there was one that said, like, was there a state, um, rent control pushback, uh, I think last year, was it?
I believe there was, there, there was a few, uh, rent control initiatives. As a matter of fact, it was something on the ballot last year, uh, as it relates to rent control, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's always an effort, and, and again, that's a fine line, because again, yes, renters shouldn't be gouged and, uh, and pay exorbitant. I mean, it costs more to live in California than probably any other state in the nation, and, and, and we, we need to address that, but at the same time, we understand that what makes America greatest capitalism and people have invested in properties for them, not necessarily to get rich, but to be able to make a living and cover their, you know, their expenses. So it's sometimes hard for government to tell you what you should rent that property for when you've invested your own money to, to purchase it and maintain it, so. We're trying to work that out, but, uh, that's why we're, as we permit more housing to be built, uh, we're, we're, um, asking like for a few units, like say, if you're gonna build a hundred-unit building, we have ten of those that are below market rate, you know? So, w- w- those are the kind of things that we're trying to put in legislation, ask for developers, because really what has caused some of the problem is what we did in two thousand and eleven when we suspended, um, redevelopment, and, because that was the tool that a lot of developers were able to come into a community and write down dirt and, and build a more affordable housing unit below market rate, because it was subsidized through rent, uh, uh, redevelopment. Now that, that's gone away, uh, most of those costs are, are, all those costs, I should say, are bored by the, borne by the developer, and many times, that's why they walk away from the projects, because it no longer pencils out. I mean, especially if you have to do cleanup on a site, and what should be, you know, you would think you could build something for. I forgot what the cost is that's costing us to build a unit, per unit housing, but it's extraordinary, uh, amount of money here in California when you, uh, access, uh, assess, I should say, permit, fees, land costs, uh, you know, materials, uh, a, 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 a unit now is, you know, far more here in California than it is in, say, a neighboring state of Arizona, so that's driving up costs too.
Yeah, it's, it's becoming absurd. I think it was, last time they mentioned it would take, um, three hundred and fifty thousand to build one unit?
Yeah, that's about right. I know it was a, it's a crazy number right now, that's about right, and we're trying to figure out how do we get that down, and one of the things, piece of legislation that's also working its way through is A- 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 ADU, accessory dwelling units. That's allowing, you know, homeowners to put what we used to refer to as granny flat flats, allow them to build a unit on their property and, uh, waive those fees, permitting fees, and allow them to do it, because that becomes, one, needed housing, but also, again, a, a, a source of income for that landlord, uh, landlord or that homeowner, so, um, uh, during these tough economic times, but at the same time, it becomes affordable housing for those folks who need it. So that's a piece of legislation, uh, that is getting a lot of traction too right now, uh, making it easier to buil- uh, build AD- ADUs, accessory dwelling units on property, and waiving those fees.
That would actually help quite a bit.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of cities, as you well know, uh, 'cause a lot of cities don't want that in their communities, so we're trying to make it far more attractive, so they allow that, they say local zoning and all of that, and we respect that, 'cause I was, again, I was a local elected official, but we, we have to find ways to, again, uh, make housing available, 'cause that's the biggest, uh, roadblock we face here in California, housing people. We have the biggest ho- o- homeless population in the nation here in California, and in LA County. Sixty thousand people sleep on the street every day, in LA County.
And it's difficult to address that problem, without having some kind of affordable housing, um, for them to take advantage of.
Yeah.
Um, you, you know, there was, um, I, I have two more questions before I, you know, I wanna take too much of your time, or almost.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Good, perfect. Uh, I have one resident that asked, um, "Is Hawthorne a, considered an opportunity zone?"
Um, I'm not sure. I, um, and that's something we're looking at too. Uh, those opportunity zones, primarily the enterprise zones, uh, and opportunity zones are federally designated, but we're also looking at some state, that's part of, again, what we're looking at, the overlay with this twenty-five billion of those areas that have been deemed opportunity zones and investing money in, in, in areas such as that. But those opportunity zones are primarily identified by the federal government, so I would have to check on that.
Um, 'cause I know that the, certain parts of a city could be an opportunity zone, while like other parts aren't, or is?
Yeah, usually not the whole city. Yeah, you have certain pockets that, regardless of what city you're in, that are, that are deemed, uh, opportunity zones. It's never the, in whole city that's identified as such. There's certain pockets, yeah.
Right. Um, yeah, this, this question is back to, um, your, your piece of legislation that you're trying to push through. Um, let's see, I just, uh, um, this comes from Chris Lynn McCarron. "I really appreciate this forum. As a mom and pop landlord who only owns one home, I've been paying the bills for my tenant for months and it's starting my ability to stay in my own home. Does the eviction moratorium have any enforcement to the paying back of rent to the landlord? Um, I feel that most advocacy has been for tenants and not people like me."
No, that's what we're saying. We're, we're, we're gonna try to provide the landlord, 'cause it makes no sense for a landlord to go in foreclosure, then everybody loses that way. So yes, we're putting landlord protection in the piece of legislation that I'm working on, and that's when saying, that tax credit is something, again, that they will build to sell immediately or hold on to for ten years, or securitize it through some lending institution who will take it off their hands, so. Uh, w- w- no, we, we, we understand the stresses that the, the landlord's having, so that's why we're trying to, uh, balance this and making sure that it's not just one-sided here, and, uh, we have to look after, look after the landlord, and that's what we're trying to do with, not only, uh, my piece of legislation, but again, um, it's, uh, another bill, uh, that I have that, uh, provides a little, a more tax incentive for owner-occupied units as well. So it gives them a little bit of extra, uh, protection, uh, and, and tax forgiveness if it's an owner-occupied piece of property, uh, during this tough time as well.
Okay. Thank you for answering that one. Oh, were you saying something?
The, like I say, the bill, um, that, um, I have one, it's SB fourteen forty-seven, and again, it's a homeowner's protection for tenant-occupied properties, and it provides, again, a little tax credit and, uh, for, again, uh, some financial relief on the mortgage as long as the, uh, again, it's owner-occupied. So if you got a triplex and owner lives in one of another two, it provides them additional protection there versus someone who owns a home somewhere else and owns, you know, a triplex somewhere in another town. This gives them a little bit more protection under owner-occupied, uh, piece of property.
Oh, wonderful. Uh, they said, "Thank you for that answer." Uh, now, the, the last one we have here, uh, before we allow you to go and continue the good work you're doing, Senator, um, is, uh, "Do you know when this, when this legislation we pass through to make it easier for owners to build, uh, an ADU, uh, i.e. waiver fees?"
I'm sure you, you will be what now?
Uh, "Do you know when this legislation we pass through to make it easier for owners to build ADUs?"
Well, the legislation is going through right now, but last year Governor, uh, Newsom signed a piece of legislation. Now, if you have an existing garage, you can't do new construction, but if you have an existing garage and say, "Hey, I got nothing but junk in my garage," and as long as you don't have to go and reconstruct and put up new construction, you can convert your building, uh, your garage right now, as long as it's existing structure. But this new piece of legislation, it hasn't passed yet, it's still working its way through both houses. It will allow you to, uh, construct from the ground up, new construction and waive a lot of the permits and fees required to do so. But again, uh, I don't remember the, uh, bill last year, but the governor signed it. I, I was with him in LA when he signed it at a resident's house who had already converted her garage over to a ADU unit, so there is already existing legislation on the book, but this new one, uh, gives you a little bit more, um, uh, fee waiver and, and assistance in, in building it.
Oh, great. Um, that's actually very good to know. I'm, I'm, I'm excited to see that get pushed through and see how that can also further help the housing shortage and the residents here in Hawthorne.
Yeah.
Now, now before we end, uh, this portion, as Senator Bradford, again, thank you for coming out, giving us the time from a busy schedule in Sacramento. Is there anything that you wanna leave, um, you know, the great city of Hawthorne with, um, as they're all here anxiously waiting?
Hey, keep doing the great work. Again, I, I, in order for all this to work, uh, we need cooperation from our local government, so it's good to have good partners like yourself, Councilman, who's committed, uh, to improving not only the residential life for people, but the business community as well. Um, and, uh, it, it, it takes teamwork, both on the state, local, and federal level, to make any of this work, so it's good to have, uh, a, a partner like yourself. Um, I would just say that there's a lot of work ahead, and we have to be open to what is, will probably be the new norm. Uh, a lot of people say, "I can't wait to get back to the normal." Uh, I'm warning, maybe normal is not what we want to get back to. I think the normal has found us in this crazy place that we, uh, we are in today, so I think it's time for a new normal, uh, here in California and in the United States, and, um, I look forward to working with you and being of whatever assistance. One thing I will say, it's also a piece of legislation looking to help convert underutilized strip malls into workforce housing. Uh, a- again, uh, we're in discussion under the Economic Recovery Task Force, so if there's, we, we know where there's a lot of strip malls that are just, w- w- we all know where a lot of folks are moving away from brick and mortar, you know, retail, and a lot of folks are doing more and more, especially now, online, and w- w- the reality is a lot of those shopping centers and stores are gonna close down, so we're seeing, instead of letting those places sit vacant, that tax credit will now be applied to the landlord and allow, as long as he, he or she builds workforce housing for the working people who need either to purchase or, or rent a piece of property, so that's another piece of legislation we're working on too, so, and I know Hawthorne has a lot of, um, uh, commercial, uh, shopping centers, so if it's places that are underutilized, there might be some opportunities there as well.
Oh, that's a gr- oh, actually, that's actually very, very, uh, great to hear. If, if, once you catch wind of when it's actually pushed through and finalized, uh, please let me know, and I know.
You, you will, you will know, because, uh, uh, we're working on it, we had a, a call on Friday, and, uh, it's still, again, a lot of this stuff is very fluid because of the truncated legislative process, so as soon as the bill's in print, I'll make sure that you guys are aware of it.
Thank you so much, Senator. Um, I think there's one, uh, oh, that's the, the, the last thing I wanted to mention was, um, I was going to also have a, a letter of support from my office to you, um, in supporting your new piece of legislation. Hopefully that can add some additional help, you know, from the small city of Hawthorne. Um, but I wanted to show the commitment that I have on my side for this partnership, um, especially with your office. Um, so I'll be sending over a letter, and I'll be asking the rest of the council to do the same, and see if we get that legislation pushed through.
All of that is important, we appreciate it. Again, we can't do it in a vacuum, it's, it's gonna take teamwork, and, uh, you guys are vitally important to anything that we do here in the state of California, so I thank you for your, your friendship, and, uh, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much, Senator. Um, again, appreciate it, um, and then, uh, we'll, uh, we'll continue with the Hawthorne portion of it, but, uh, again, I wanted to say, "Thank you, Senator," and, uh, hope you have a good fight up there.
I will, and I'll see you soon, man. Take care.
See you soon. You too. Bye. Um, okay, now we'll, uh, continue with the, uh, the rest of the portion to answer some city of Hawthorne-related questions. Let's see here. We have. Uh, "What should residents know about the trajectory of COVID cases in Hawthorne? Are they going up, going down, or staying steady?" Um, so as many of you know that I'm, I'm at the COVID testing center, uh, three times out of the, out of the week, um, so right now, be- because we're offering more testing, um, of course, you're going to see the numbers, um, now, because we're offering more testing, of course, you're going to see the numbers pick up, but that's only because we're offering testing to everyone in the city, also in the entire South Bay. It has been increasing, but luckily not to the point where we can't move forward from phase one, or two, or three. We're not being pushed back. So luckily, we're stumbling forward, and nothing's been causing us to go back. So, yes, there's a small little increase, but nothing to have the city or the state have any concern of pausing Hawthorne from moving on to the next phase. Let's see. We have, upcoming, too, from the last council meeting, we do have the term limit measure, my term limit measure we placed on the November ballot. This is to help enable that council members, including the mayor, would have a set term limit. It was, they never had one before, and it was open-ended, where they should continue to run and run and run. This way, placed before you guys, would be a ballot in order to create term limits for the city of Hawthorne and kind of have an even flow. It's kind of like having running water continue to go through the city and not having like a bucket fermenting and having, you know, as I like to do the example, mosquitoes start popping out. So this way, you'll have new blood come in and new ideas and end the history of corruption here in Hawthorne. So make sure when you look at the November 3 ballot, you look for that measure and just tick the box. We're also, my reopening task force has come up with a plan to get City Hall and our parks reopened. I'll send that out in an email blast and also put that on my website, going through the details of each phase and when each phase will start for the city of Hawthorne. We are in phase one now, and starting July, we'll be in phase two. This will start seeing more public facilities open. City Hall will be open July 7 to the public, and we'll slowly roll out restaurants opening, the public facility parks, the pool, and everything like that. When we hit August, we'll be in stage three, and this will also expand more public facilities and allow further restaurants and other, what used to be considered hotspots for COVID-19 cases begin to reopen as things have become safer. I also want to mention that there's street sweeping has already begun, but ticketing will resume. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that we've started to have street sweeping. Please be aware. Some of you haven't received tickets, but you have to make sure that it's not a warning. Sometimes people are thinking that their citation is actually a real one, but in fact, it's just a warning. So just be aware that street sweeping has begun, and they are going to begin giving out citations in regards to that. The next thing is, I wanted to give an update on fireworks. We've all heard, especially this past weekend, it's kind of getting out of hand, it's going all over the place. I've been getting a little extra annoyed by it as well. So I've called for a Citizens Advisory Committee to find solutions to the problem and involve all stakeholders. One solution is to ban all fireworks, including the safe and sane ones. This way, you know, once you limit the sales and limit those uses, hopefully, it's going to reduce the amount of illegal fireworks being shot in the air. Having these citizens also out there informing our Public Works and our City Hall employees of where these hotspots are, this way, we can kind of have a collective effort in addressing the fireworks issue. We'll also be sending out a petition for residents to sign, to hear their voice, whether they do want to see it banned or not, how they're feeling about it, but just please be aware of that in your emails and at the next council meeting. Just a quick few little housekeeping before I jump into the Q and A. Anyone who needs COVID testing, especially for returning to work, can go free of charge to our Hawthorne Testing Center, which is at the Betty Ainsworth Sports Center in Hawthorne, right next to the Memorial Park. As you can see on the screen, there's the appointment by phone, and we're to sign up online. Again, it's free, you don't need to show any symptoms. It's quick and easy. There's also videos on my website showing the whole process from beginning to end, five to six minutes, no headache, no hassle. So go in there, get tested, have your results in two to three days. At least this way, you can sleep safe and sound, knowing that you have no trace of the virus. Let's see. Real quick, I have regular virtual office hours every first and third Thursday of the month on Facebook Live at noon. The next one is next Thursday. Then every other week, the second and fourth Thursday are those town halls, these town halls, and the next one is June 25 at 12. The one in July, we're going to have California State Treasurer Fiona Ma on the, on our virtual town hall. She's going to go into more detail about the state budget, other programs that small businesses and nonprofits can take advantage of, as well as residents dealing with unemployment, ED issues, or stimulus checks, or things of that nature. So make sure to sign up for that one as well. You can get all this information on haterhawthorne.com. Now to jump into the Q and A. Oh, and real quick regarding the, on the video, when you watch me on the video, you do not have to go to the testing center dressed all in the PPEs. You just need a face mask. Some residents were confused on that. I'm dressed in that because I help with the testing and administering people inside the center, but you do not have to wear all the gowns or heavy gloves, just a face mask, and you'll be taken care of. Let's see, I understand. Let's see. Mr. Awad, can the community rental properties with a pool begin to use it again now? We need that exercise. Thanks. Yes, I do have that information on, and I also have that posted, but let me bring that up to tell you. Let's see here. Now, when it comes to the opening of the pool. Let's see, outdoor, the aquatic center. The splash ponds. The splash ponds will be open July 7 with a social distancing of six feet required and six participants on the pad, 20 total within the park area at one time. Expect that for the pool in itself, but again, as we're reopening slowly, it's, we're going to be limited to how many people are allowed to be at each facility. But I will be posting this entire sheet showing what facilities and what parts are open and what date. Let's see. There was a question here asking, hello, I am a new homeowner in the city of Hawthorne. I am also the mother of a black son. What are we doing in the city of Hawthorne to ensure what happened to George Floyd does not happen again to my son? It's a very good question. I did have my statement regarding the unjust murder of George Floyd posted. What we're also doing at the last council meeting, I asked for a public review of hiring and training practices of our Hawthorne Police Department, and to also go forward with the measures that were sent out by the county of the eight procedures that we should not be using as force, and possibly looking at implementing a citizen oversight task force or committee that was listed in the county suggestions, also for Hawthorne PD. This way, we can kind of show the transparency and showing that, you know, Hawthorne is committed to address this issue and not be part of the problem. Let's see. Oh, as it's nearing up 1 o'clock, we're kind of going over. I'll take a few more questions before we have to jump off. Does one need to have a doctor's order to have, to show symptoms in order to get COVID testing? No, you do not. You can just, whether you feel that you have symptoms or not, it's free. Just go in there, get your test, and you don't even have to provide your insurance information. So, yeah, no doctor's order, nothing. Oh, asking about rental properties with pools. Are you asking on when you can start selling them, or? Regarding the pool question? Oh, okay, okay. You mean the, yes, for the community pool aspect of it, you would want to leave that up to the residents' discretion. For us in the city, we can regulate, when we regulate, we regulate public facilities and public parks and things of that nature. When it comes to community pools inside, you still want to practice the social distancing. You want to practice, you know, having the face masks. Just be very careful. You can use your own community pool, but you're going to have to make sure that the managers of that facility are okay with having that being moved forward. Waited in line for four hours to vote at our city library. What pre-planning measures are taking place to ensure we are in Hawthorne prepared for the November elections? For this upcoming November election, it's all going, everyone has the choice of doing a mail-in ballot, which will make it extremely easy. There's no line, there's no waiting, just fill it in, put it in your mailbox, and you're done. That seems to be the best way to also deal with the whole COVID pandemic, so no one feels that they're going to be catching anything. They can stay safe, and it cuts down that time. I was in line for three, four hours, just trying to get in to vote as well. It was, it was a headache, you had long lines, but yeah, make sure when you see in the mail, your mail-in ballot, fill it out. This way, you don't have to stand those long lines and have the potential of, you know, catching the COVID-19. Where I live off Rosecrans and Lemoli, I have not seen a street cleaning in months. When will those be resuming? They're supposed to be resuming now, street sweeping is. Expect during this upcoming Monday for them to go in heavier as well, but if you don't see them or have any visual of them coming down your street, please send me an email with your address and name, this way I can check in and see why that is, and then have them come out to street, to sweep your streets. But just make sure that you guys are aware of the signs. They are ticketing, giving out citations, so I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that as well. There's another one. I am a new resident in Hawthorne. I love it here. Do you have a suggestion for how I can come up to speed quickly on the issues that are important in this community and to the city council? Yes, there are two locations. My website, haterhawthorne.com, it's a little more expanded on, I go into detail regarding specific bills that are pushing through, resolution and ordinances, especially coming from the state, and resources regarding COVID. You can also go onto the city's website, where you'll have like the municipal code, you'll have, if it's listed, some of the email addresses of the other elected officials and things of that nature. So, cityofhawthorne.com, or you can go to haterhawthorne.com. They both have different aspects of information. I would suggest that the city of Hawthorne set up a virtual digital reporting tool that is monitored in real time by Hawthorne City that allows for reporting of when fireworks are being set off. That is a very good idea, and that's what having this task force is going to utilize. So there will be a map of the city where residents can kind of geofence where they're seeing these nuisances occur, and that way informing us of, you know, how to address it. When will parks be open, specifically the jungle gym area? For jungle gyms, that will be open. It says here, park trails. Fitness station. So they're open now, June 1. Now, for the Memorial Park Fitness Zone, there's social distance of six feet and face covers at all times. Users must sanitize equipment before and after and up to six people max. When it comes to the other fitness stations, there is a social distance of six feet, face covers at all times, and again, users must sanitize equipment before and after. I'll take in two more questions, and then sadly, we'll have to end this virtual office hour, town hall. Let's see. To find information regarding, hard to find info now, but do you know if I am allowed to build a two-story ADU? You know, if you call City Hall and the Planning Department, staff there will tell you what and where you can build. Also, the municipal code, and I'll also place that on my website, of a link that takes you directly to the Hawthorne Municipal Code. For you to find it yourself, it's very difficult. It's kind of buried in there. You know, there always tends to be this thing where, you know, local government is very backwards when it comes to tech, but I'll have that placed on my website. This way, you'll just click, and you'll have everything there. Let's see. The last thing. Also, don't forget, you can always just email me any questions you have. This way, I can also provide that to you directly, and you can ask any other questions that you might have. Let's see. The last question that I'll answer, have time for. Is there a food bank specifically in Hawthorne during COVID quarantine? Also, can anything be done about the illegal fireworks being shot off before Independence Day? Thank you so much for this forum. Thank you so much for that, Molly. Yeah, I did mention that for the fireworks, I am putting up a citizen-run initiative, a task force to, on the digital side, have a map where they can pinpoint where these are occurring. At the same time, I'm going to be pushing some legislation through to ban all fireworks, including safe and sane, because it's getting way out of hand. And for the food banks, there are, you know, there are more than one. There's a long list of it, and I'll also have that posted on my website at haterhawthorne.com, or if you don't mind emailing me separately now, and I can provide you that list. I did make that list already, too, which is great. So I'll have that posted on my website in addition to sending it to you. But again, thank you guys so much for attending this week's town hall. I have my office hours next week at the same time, and then again, July 9 regarding small businesses, nonprofits, and, you know, EDD issues regarding unemployment. I have the state treasurer coming down to talk about, you know, the state budget finances on helping out small businesses and nonprofits, ways to deal with the ED department, and a wider way of other panelists to discuss finances, finance programs that we can take advantage of here in the city of Hawthorne and for you, the resident. So again, the questions that we're not able to answer on this Q and A, I will have them saved and email you my response. This way, you don't feel as if I didn't get to you. But yes, rest assured, I'll get back to all the questions posted here. Again, thank you guys so much for attending. Can't wait to see you guys next week.